Welcome to the City Council Meeting of February 27, 2017. In accordance with LV 898, a copy of the Opening Meetings Act is posted in the back of chambers. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agendas are available outside our chamber door or online. If anyone needs a parking pass, you can please see our city clerk. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, followed by those who are opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Testifiers should clearly state their name and address, and then after their testimony, sign the pink slips of paper. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a courtesy, this timer will sound after four minutes. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to our adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue that is not on today's agenda nor planned for a future agenda. Courtesy and decorum are expected of all who come before this body. No one may approach city staff without permission from the council, and no applauding, booing, or other expression of support or opposition is allowed, except through testimony. Also, cell phones should be turned off and private conversation taken outside the chambers. And during the week, if you have questions regarding an agenda item, please feel free to contact the council. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, our first item is our public hearing consent agenda. They are items 1 through 33.
Would anyone here like to speak to one of these items on our consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Please come forward.
Jane Kinsey, 6703 Hawkins Bend, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516. I wish to speak against resolution number 16 in definition White Castle Roofing. And I would also like to be sworn in to make this testimony.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
This is a very serious situation. I'm going to give you some background. 2013, there was a hailstorm in Lincoln, Nebraska. White Castle put new roofs on three units, the middle of which I live in and own, which are townhouses, 6701, 6703, 6705 Hawkins Bend. These, over the following months, August of 2013, White Castle put new roofs on, and they included GAF Timberline HD shingles. White Castle was noted on their website to be a master installer and that they had been since 2009. 5/9/2016, there was another hailstorm in Lincoln. I called White Castle to come out and view the damage and give me an estimate. I spoke to Toffler Merrill, who is one of their employees, and who said he had photos of these three roofs. He said there was some minor hail damage, but there was defective shingles on these three units. He said that they were known as blistering, that the company had known that for at least six months when he went to work for them and had been very busy trying to straighten this all out. And I said, why hadn't people been notified about this if they knew about it? And he had no answer for that. I went online and noticed that in 2012, in South Carolina, GAF had an online lawsuit for defective shingles. I called White Castle three times and finally went into the office to see an owner. I was told he was not available. In 2016, in October and November, I finally had a visit from a repair specialist, Ben Alderman. He came out and said that they were meeting with the GAF rep, but with no result. They were not responsible for these defective shingles. I pointed out to him that Nebraska law holds up any business who sells out-of-state materials that are defective is responsible. The next meeting was with Mr. Alderman and Adam Williams, a project administrator. They came out and they said, yes, other, a few people had complained, and one had gotten a new roof, labor and material. I requested then that the owner meet with us. On 10/31/16, he and the other two fellow came out, and I asked them why had they had not notified people of these defective shingles. They had no answer for that, except to say that as things came up, they were addressing it. I asked the names of other people in the community who might have this, and this may include public buildings, if you have had contracts with White Castle before. And they said, yes, they would give it to me. And I asked them the name of their lawyer. They gave me that also. So then they said I needed to call and make a warranty claim, and that White Castle would pull the shingles and send it in with the warranty. We then did that, and they sent that in, and of course, GAF refused it because of hail damage.
That's your time.
I would like for you to not renew this contract automatically. It's for two years. I would like for you to have a check on public property by White Castle and GAF shingles.
Just a moment, Ms. Kinsey. Because your time was up. But Carl, could you maybe ask?
Yes, so what are you asking for?
Thank you.
Okay, that's, you want me to repeat that? Okay. I would like for you to not renew this contract automatically, and that you would check public property in which White Castle and GAF shingles, since 1913, or 2013, have been placed on your property, and that you, or if you don't want to do that, that you would have some guarantee, and I don't know, thinking maybe a surety bond, that if something happens, that you have defective shingles, that you would be able to get remuneration for that. Apparently, White Castle is not going to do this without a lawyer. I have consulted a lawyer for my own personal use. Now, Friday, I spoke to Mr. Williams. He told me there may be 20,000 buildings in this town that have these defective shingles. White Castle, I'm not going to impugn their reputation and say that they knew this when they put them on. They have denied that. I have no proof that they did. They've always been an upstanding company in town. I've had two other roofs put on by them from hail damage. So I think you need to know this. I think people in the community need to know this, because White Castle is responsible under Nebraska law.
Thank you. I see that our purchasing director is here, and I might just have him come up and just address the concerns briefly and explain a little bit about the contract.
Bob Waller, purchasing agent.
Thanks, Bob. Anything you can share with us about some of these concerns and how they might be addressed, whether or not you need a little additional time for this particular item?
I'm not, I'm not sure if we've awarded to White Castle in the past specifically for shingles. It'd be something that I'd have to look into. Our contracts, as they read right now, do have warranty provisions in them, along with bonding for the projects that are done through the unit price contracts. Our warranties either go through a minimum of one year, but also through manufacturer's warranty periods. So as far as I know, we've not had a problem with defective shingles in my time here, at least 10 years, but it is something that we can check on from the last three years back in our system to see if White Castle has done any work for the city or the county.
If we were to delay this till our next meeting, would that be an issue? Would that cause difficulties for your department?
The contracts are supposed to take effect on March 1st. We would be delaying the use of that contract until then. I don't have any emergencies that I'm aware of at this point, so if you would like to do that, that'd be your prerogative.
Cindy.
Thank you. Bob, it says on here that the contract has the option to renew for two additional years. Does that option to renew require both parties to be in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so we are able, if we find something, we are able within the next year not to renew the following year? Is that?
Correct. It's a two-year contract with an option for two years on the renewal. We also have a 30-day termination for convenience or cause in all of these contracts.
Okay, what would be considered cause?
Poor performance, other issues that might come up during the contract that resulted in either a loss of money or a safety issue or something that would put the city at risk.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, would anyone else like to speak to this item or to any item on our consent agenda?
Yeah, Mike Morosen, I'd like to speak to number 15. I would just like, select van and storage to be removed from the contract or not allowed the contract. I presented in the past personal information that I dealt with. They do not fill their contracts, and they do not answer. And there were a number of items when I was moved that they did not fill the contract. I was charged for numerous things on their contract of which they did not fulfill. I present those in the past to numerous times. I found packing materials tucked away in boxes and hidden, and I was charged for extra packing materials that shouldn't have been charged. So I presented you with the information. If you need that information, again, I will Xerox off that information and get that to you on the contract. Yeah, Cindy.
Thanks for being here today. Were any of those moving? Was that related to their work with the city, or was that for you on a personal move?
No, it was with, it was through the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Bob, why don't you just come back up one more time? We have a number of contracts on our consent agenda today, and I thought maybe you could just briefly explain why they're all appearing now and your process to try and select quality vendors for the city, and whether or not there, you know, if there's anything else you feel like you need to add for our knowledge before we take our vote.
Sure. There are 100 contracts on the 18 different services that are in the consent agenda today. Those were brought to you after they went through the bid process through the, for the city, the county, and the building commission. We received information from the departments, both from history that they have, but also the work that the purchasing department has had with each one of these contractors over the years. And I guess as an example for the moving, we have been using Select for several years. They've been under contract with us, and I'm not aware of any complaints or issues that we've had with them. We can't, we, when we do get a complaint from a department, we look into it. We can issue a report on it and talk to the vendor if it's serious enough, or we also have the option of terminating if it's something that we believe has put the city at a great amount of risk. The, the level of responsiveness, responsibility, we've looked into all of the information provided from the vendors with their pricing, in addition to their insurance, which includes workman's comp, additional insured, all of the liability coverage that they need to have. So we have run every one of these vendors through kind of a gauntlet to make sure that they are going to be applicable to what we need, and that's why they're in front of you today.
Okay. Cindy.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the complaints that Mr. Morosen was just talking about?
I'm not.
Is there someplace where we centrally accumulate complaints that would have to do with any of the vendors?
If there is a complaint, normally it would go directly to the department that ordered the service, and then the department, if they believe it is something that purchasing can assist with because it's a contract issue, then, then that's when they would come to us to resolve it.
And so would any, you had mentioned that there, there could be some type of response to complaints. Would that be your department's area or the other departments that are receiving the complaints?
See if I get your question. The, and actually, we have a new written process that is taking effect here in a couple days, where there will be a specific policy in writing on how to survey and keep track of vendor performance. Up until this point, it has been just written communications back and forth between the departments and us whenever there was a problem. And if the, if the department could resolve it on their own, if it was a billing issue or if it was a performance issue, they normally try to resolve things on their own without coming to us. And then when it does come to us, we work with the law department to make sure that all of the contract terms are being met and how to get the customer, the department, the service that they are required to get.
So would you only know about it if it was unresolved by the department?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Bob. Would anyone else like to speak to any item on our consent agenda? Items 1 through, I believe, 33. Seeing none? Teresa?
All right. Items 1 through 22 were introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Discussion before we vote. I am satisfied that with the process that we have in place to approve these vendors, but I think it's also important that now we've heard some concerns from the public and that we'll keep an eye on those.
Cindy.
Yeah, and I share Councilman Christiansen's sentiments, and I would like to see, I think it would be nice, since our purchasing department is actually engaging in these renewal, these contracts, if they, he indicated that there was a process that's going to be used for tracking, if you would, complaints, and I'd like to see the purchasing department at least have some kind of a tally of that or report of that prior to any future renewals.
Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Not here.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Items 28 through 30 were introduced by Christiansen.
Still moved. Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Next then would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item 34, application of Mochara LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 100 feet by 30 feet at McFarland &amp; Sons Authentic Irish Pub at 710 P Street on March 17, 2017, from 4:00 PM to 12:30 AM.
Hello.
Is your right here? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Stacy Cole, 710 P Street.
Welcome. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your application and?
Well, third time in, well, three years in a row now. Just another fun event for St. Patrick's Day. We having some great food, live music, the Celtic dancers and the bagpipers are awesome. So excited about that, just excited to do it again, so.
Any questions? It looks like we have a similar item for this roughly same time period, and there'll be the block being proposed to be closed, and there'll be some collaboration between your business and the other establishment then?
Yeah, we're right next door to each other, so.
And you guys are what we're communicating about managing them?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next then is item 35, application of McKinney's Pub LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 35 feet by 80 feet at McKinney's Irish Pub at 151 North 8th Street on March 17, 2017, between 1:00 PM and 12:00 AM. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address, Joel.
Joel Shasso, 471 Fletcher Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68521.
Is there anything you'd like to tell us about your event?
Very similar, third year, same thing, blocking off the road. We've got the proper barricades, everything, worked with the city with the events committee, and I think that we'll run it similar to last year, should be a good fun event for the city.
Carl.
Just if you could explain how, how it will be set up to sep, because it's separate areas, right?
Yes, they are separate areas. McFarland's in the past has had a tent where they have done everything, and I think it's pretty similar this year. And then we will have a tent for the first time this year, smaller, and a chain link fence around the rest of the area. And there is a walkway in between the two that people can still get down, P Street, if needed.
Right, great, thank you.
It looked like there were off-duty police officers being hired for the event.
Yes, we both have off-duty police officers and our own private security.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, Teresa?
Would someone like to move these items?
I would move approval of both items.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion? All right, St. Patty's Day is coming up. Please call the roll.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Motion carried, 5 to 0. Next in is our public hearing resolution, item 36, approving an advertising agreement between the Parks and Rec City Golf Courses and Benchcraft Company, which will provide revenue from advertisement at all five municipal golf courses, and will provide scorecards, benches, and other supplies and equipment for each course at no cost.
Good evening. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I think, as the council may remember, this is an item that was continued from a meeting back in December, and I think the reason for that continuation or that reason, pardon me, the reason that the, that this item was placed on pending was allow us time to hire our new golf business coordinator, and we've accomplished that. It's been a lengthy and kind of a long process, but about a week ago, we offered that position to Wade Foreman. You may know that Wade Foreman has been in our system for about two years. Wade has been serving as our golf player development supervisor and is now moving into the position of being the golf business coordinator. A little bit about Wade's background, Wade has been involved in golf business. He's had progressively responsible positions within the golf business for about 20 years. Wade is a certified member of the PGA. I think one of the things that is a little bit unique about Wade is he's one of literally a handful of PGA members in the state of Nebraska who have certification in golf operations. So I did get a chance to talk to Wade about this contract, and he really said three things. One, he said he's not familiar with a better arrangement other places. When I asked him about this kind of advertising arrangement, I asked whether he was familiar with something that might be better than this, and he said not. He said that this is significant because it saves the program money, and we know that because the program, or pardon me, the scorecards that are provided by Benchcraft, the golf program would have to print and supply those if we didn't get them through this contract. The value of that is about, we estimate about $12,000. He also said that, and I agree with him, that this is significant money that we receive for, in exchange for allowing advertising on the courses, and I should note that there is no city expense involved here. We essentially allow this, allow Benchcraft Company to secure the advertisers. They place the advertising on the scorecards or on the, excuse me, the elements that are on the courses. The program receives $20,000 a year that we direct towards capital repair and replacement projects. I think, as you know, that we have been working mightily over the last several years to try to put together a funding strategy for our capital repair and replacement program, and so this $20,000 is significant within, within that program. Over the last two months, I've also had several conversations with representatives of Benchcraft, probably some things that are, I think, of significant with that, within that. Benchcraft works with about 4,500 golf courses across the United States and within Canada and actually within Guam. A majority of those courses do what we did initially, where they do the advertising. The advertising then goes on the scorecards, and then those scorecards are provided at no cost to the providers. Two years ago, we expanded that, and now we have the benches and the ball washers and the, the display boards on the courses. It was at that time that they offered the $20,000 a year compensation for the ability to do that. There, they said that essentially the, the deal that they've established with Lincoln is essentially in the top tier of compensation that they provide. And they also indicated that they've not increased their advertising rates for the past several years, and they would commit to not doing that over the next three years. They were not willing to agree to an escalator provision within, within this contract. So I guess I would urge the city council's action on this. If we're going to move forward with this agreement, we need to do it in a timely manner so that Benchcraft can, can begin lining up advertisers. If we are not going to approve this agreement, then we've got to figure out how we're going to get scorecards prepared and printed, and, and we need to get that done in obviously a timely manner because the, the season is going to be upon us. And that was a lengthy kind of a description of what's happened over the last couple of months, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Carl.
Thanks, Lynn, and, and good job with your hiring of Wade Foreman. I think he's, he obviously has already paid off quite handsomely because, how many rounds have you had played in the month of February?
About 4,500, so yeah.
He's done a great job.
We'll credit that all to Wade.
Okay, thank you.
Carl, I should appreciate, my appreciation for your involvement in that process. Thank you very much.
So you don't think that had anything to do with the weather? Just saying. Actually, so as I understand it, just to boil it down, net revenue to the city, if we move forward with this, no cost involved to the city?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And if we didn't do this, it would cost us $12,000.
It would, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Seeing none? Please call the next item.
Next is our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. I'll call item 37, approving the transfer of funds from approved appropriations into the Parks and Rec Department HVAC Project Fund 465 CIP for renovation of the HVAC system at Belmont Rec Center.
Good evening. Lynn Johnson again with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. This is a continuation of the discussion about putting together funding for the indoor air quality project at Belmont Recreation Center. It's also a continuation of discussion of which method or which system we want to use for heating and cooling the building. At the end of the last public hearing, the city council requested some additional information. J. JJ Yost, our planning and construction manager, provided a memo, uh, on Friday, February twenty-fourth with that information. There was a request for looking at the possibility of using rooftop units and whether that might be a more cost-efficient method or more cost-effective method than either two of the other options that we've discussed. Um, there was also a request for a breakdown of, of the costs for the interior renovation costs, the painting of walls, new flooring, the new roofing, that's included in that memo as well. And then, um, there was a discussion about the roofing system and a comparison was provided of a modified bitumen roof system that has been proposed as compared to a fully adhered EPDM system, which is essentially a, a rubber roof membrane system. Um, JJ Yost with our planning and construction section is here this evening. We also have Scott Weiscamp with Lincoln Public Schools. Um, as we discussed last time, this is really a partnership, a project that we are proposing to partner with Lincoln Public Schools. Um, and, and, um, we benefit, I think, in a number of ways. One is that this is a much larger project. And so we benefit from the cost effectiveness of being able to bid the work at the recreation center as part of a much better, much larger project. So hopefully we get a better price for that. I would also say that the city benefits from coordinated project management. Um, we would actually spend more to manage this project if we, if we, if we moved ahead independently. Um, I, I think with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. I know that JJ and, and Scott are both here this evening. They'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Jane, then Carl.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much for the follow-up information. Although some of the information I still had questions on, um, because that's what I do with facilities, manage them. And, uh, I can honestly say I've never put ten separate rooftop units on such a small space of twelve thousand square feet. It's always been one, so.
I, I, I can speak, I think, only a little bit to that. Um, this information came from ETI, the engineering group that has been working on the project. Dan Thompson, I don't think, is here this evening. What I understand about this and the reason that they approached it this way is that the recreation center is really a bunch of small spaces. And the way that they would, would approach heating and cooling those spaces is essentially utilizing rooftop units that would be, uh, that would be, um, uh, controlling the air quality or the condition of the air within, in each of those spaces. And so it ends up being multiple units to serve a building that has lots of small spaces is the way that I understand.
And I appreciate that. And, uh, one single rooftop unit can serve multiple small spaces with multiple different temper- temperature control. So I, I was a little bit skeptical.
Surprised by that.
Thank you.
Carl.
Okay. Um, Lynn, the, looking in the crystal ball for the future, uh, what, what's the next project after Belmont in terms of a rec center that would need attention?
You know, there, there's two recreation centers out there that need attention that we've identified within our, our tenure facilities plan. One is that the HVAC system at the Easter Day Center in northeast Lincoln is aging and it's gonna need to be replaced. Um, the other is that I think we all know that the Air Park Recreation Center in the Air Park area is an old Air Force building. It, I don't think it was designed to have the lifespan that it's had, and the building is starting to fail. And, uh, I think as the city council knows, when the Arnold Elementary School building was designed, it was, it was master planned with the opportunity to add a recreation center on the north side of that building that would attach at the gym. Uh, the city, working with LPS, funded a, a larger gym there that would be part of that future recreation center. So that project for replacing the Air Park Recreation Center with a new recreation center at, um, Arnold Elementary School is on the list. And then it's not technically a recreation center anymore, but Ald Pavilion also has an old rooftop, um, HVAC system that, that is aging and needs to be replaced. So, so all three of those projects are in our tenure facilities plan.
The, the Arnold facility would be kind of comparable to, to this and what's been done at, uh, at Irving and at Calvert Elementary?
It, it would. I think one of the terms we'll have to, one of the determinations that we'll have to make with that project is how large to make the gym. Right now, there's only a single gym. It is an adult-sized gym at Arnold. Uh, at the other locations, we actually have multiple gyms. And so that'll be potentially part of that project.
Okay, and how do we determine what needs to happen to that? I mean, what, what facilities you put out there? We don't know exactly what that's gonna be. There needs to be a study or, or something?
We did some initial master planning, and so we had kind of a concept of how we would approach that. Um, if, when, when we have the opportunity to move into the master planning design of that facility, we probably would update the program study. We'd probably, you know, talk with the users, talk with the neighborhood group out there, neighborhood groups out there and get a sense of how much use there might be for a gym. Because to me, that's probably one of the big questions is, are we gonna add additional gym space? Are we gonna, gonna leave the gym spaces there? And then, yeah, the, the program for the rest of that building would look very similar to what we have at, at Belmont or at Calvert.
And you did say that the geo- geothermal wells have been installed at the Arnold School?
They are there. My understanding, um, is that we would have to expand the well field a bit, but, um, the, I wish Scott, Scott can answer this much better than I can. But the, a lot of the equipment that's in place can accommodate the added space, but I think there would have to be some additional wells drilled.
Okay. And just so my colleagues know where my mind is, this Belmont's a neighboring facility. And, and, uh, in terms of the, the need for a facility, Air Park is actually a lot higher. It, the location of the Air Park facility is on the wrong side of Northwest Forty-Eighth Street from where most of the people live. As Lynn indicated, that facility is, is long past its useful life. Uh, it's, it's, it needs to be replaced. And unfortunately, LPS was thinking ahead as was Parks in, in terms of co-locating a facility that, that would serve the community better. So, so that's, I guess, what we're hoping would be a, a next step, uh, in the next few years. So, thank you.
Go ahead. Well, I just want to follow up and say that this doesn't detract from our continued partnership with Lincoln Public Schools. And, you know, we, we look forward to the additional projects and recognize a tremendous need throughout the community. I think with Belmont, we are looking at it maybe just a little bit differently, trying to, to really maximize, uh, our, our partnership and our combination spending so that it can go and be directed towards some of those other projects that have a terrific need and, and need a new HVAC system, et cetera. So I think, you know, we're, we're very supportive of working with Lincoln Public Schools when it comes to the gymnasium. But I think when it comes to the rec center, we're looking for ways of economizing and being efficient about it. And, and we're grateful for, uh, Lincoln Public Schools of generously donating a very gently-used boiler that we can implement on the recreation center side and, and continue to, to move forward on all the renovations and enhancements on the rec center that'll be comparable to all the wonderful things that have happened at Irving and some of the other schools that we've partnered with as well. So that's not gonna detract from the final outcome. We're just looking for maximizing the savings on reusing the, the gently-used boiler and hopefully leveraging those savings towards, um, Easter Day's HVAC system.
Lynn, normally I'd want to ask you, what's the cost to not support this? But there's been so much dispute over the, uh, veracity of these costs, you know, and, and we have folks on the council who have a lot of experience with these numbers and their, their expertise really matters to us. Can you speak to how these numbers that Parks and Rec has presented us, uh, why you're confident in these numbers, why, why you think they're accurate when we have others who are disputing them? I, because really I think that that's what's really clouding the issue for us, is trying to get at whether or not there is a, a worthwhile return on the investment and, and whether or not this investment is too significant. So, uh, maybe I see Scott Weiscamp jumping up. I'd like to, I guess, hear from both of you about, uh, the rationality of these numbers.
Well, I, that's exactly where I was gonna go, because I think we look to LPS's experience. They manage many, many, many more square feet of indoor space than we do. And they've spent a lot of time looking at this. They also have a great deal of experience with this. And so we rely heavily on their experience. Um, I know that there is some concern about, you know, are the numbers accurate? I would say that, that ETI is well-respected. Um, and that we rely heavily, obviously, on their engineering expertise and their evaluation. And so that's the level of trust that I have is really based on the work that ETI has done, but also the significant experience Lincoln Public Schools has had. And I, and I, yeah, it would probably be a good time for Scott to speak to that if, if the council would like.
I would. Yes, please.
Right, thank you. Scott Weiscamp, Director of Operations for Lincoln Public Schools. First, I'd like to echo Ms. Raybold's comments that we appreciate the partnership we have with the city of Lincoln and Parks and Rec and a number of the agencies within the city organization. We've had a longstanding relationship. Uh, we just finished overhauling Irving, I think. Ms. Raybold was at the open house yesterday, saw you there. And we've had that partnership with that rec center for over forty years. So, uh, we appreciate the partnership. I think the complexity of the numbers is a little bit of an apples and oranges thing here. And I also appreciate the business side of where you come from. Um, grocery stores and big boxes are different than school buildings and recreation centers. And public buildings, no different than business facilities. The expectation from the public is that they are gonna last a lifetime, in a sense. I look across the street at a building that's a hundred and one years old from where I sit in my office, Lincoln High School. And it was built for less than a half a million dollars, but I will guarantee you, we've spent millions of dollars on Lincoln High over the years. Some decisions on those million dollars of investment have been good decisions, and maybe some haven't. But I think the way we operate today in terms of LPS and what we do with facilities is we don't just look at the next life cycle. We look at life cycles beyond that so that the investment we make today may save money on the next round of the same life cycle. I can put a, one rooftop unit on a large box and condition that entire building. But when you have a lot of small spaces, as Lynn mentioned, you can still do that with a large box. But converting from a facility that doesn't have a large box to structurally accommodate a large box and run new duct work would be cost prohibitive. And I also, in schools and rec centers, have kids that are shorter than this podium who sit on the floor, who need seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two degrees at the floor to condition. So that space is gonna be conditioned differently than a large market where I'm walking through and I may be there for thirty minutes. So the user is a lot different and the application is a lot different. So again, no dispute on how you look at it and how we look at it. I think it is apples and oranges in terms of the user and our long-term. And so we use a modified bit roof system that Lynn had mentioned. And we have the ability, if we take good care of that, to extend that life twenty-five years and not tear it off after twenty-five years. We can put another cap sheet on it. A rubber system, fully adhered, you can't do that. So after about twenty years, which is about what you're gonna get out of a forty-five mil, if you're lucky, you're gonna tear that roof system off for a good portion of it. You might be able to salvage some of the insulation and you're gonna put a new roof system on it. We're not tearing anything off of the modified bit. So now all of a sudden, we've got a fifty-year plan with a modified bit. You might have a forty-year plan with a rubber roof system. So we're ten years off, but yet we're at a similar cost over fifty or forty years in today's dollars. That's just a simple comparison. You may or may not understand, and I apologize for that, because I'm trying to keep it simple, but still explain it. So mechanically, it's the same way. We have nearly eight million square feet of school buildings. Ninety-three percent of that is heated and cooled with geothermal. Our average total utility cost in that eight million square feet is less than eighty cents a square foot total utilities across the district. That's an impressive number. And I would doubt that the city has too many buildings that can meet that number. So, it's a good long-term investment. And the same thing with geothermal, that well field is a one-time investment. It's gonna be there for the next life cycle of the equipment and probably the next life cycle of the equipment. And now you're just replacing heat pumps and not a big box, uh, on top of the roof. So I won't debate the fact that you can buy one unit or five units for a cost here or there. I think it's really about positioning ourselves for not just fifteen or twenty years, but for forty or fifty years, because I think the public expects those buildings to still be there. So, that's kind of my spiel, I hope to, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jane.
I, I really can't argue with anything you, you've said. Um, but in defense of private sector, we, we too look at the longevity of our buildings and to make sure that they can exist for thirty or forty years. And we do look at their different structures, there's no doubt about it. But we look always for efficiencies and to maximize our expenditures. So we create either the energy efficiencies or the longevity and the sustainability. And we're different. As I walk through the Irving building and I was thinking, I asked, well, how many students are enrolled? And they said eight-hundred-and-fifty. So you imagine eight-hundred-and-fifty students and the faculty and staff, uh, every day going through that building, running up and down the stairs and opening the doors and closing the doors. But in, in a grocery operation, we have about twenty-five thousand customers a week, which is, you know, about three or four times of what's going in the school building. So in defense of private sector, we, we do struggle to create that longevity so that the buildings, uh, have a long life, so that we don't have to face those replacement costs. And I guess our perspective is that with all the amazing techno- technological advancements, that we know that energy-efficient systems are rapidly outpacing the older ones, so that we know even if we upgrade in, in twenty-five years, the energy efficiencies that we capture with a newer system are significant enough to, to make it worthwhile to reinvest in that way. So, um, you're right, there's a difference in buildings, but you know, we all have the same goal, though, to make sure these buildings last, that they're sustainable, that the roofs are functional and outlast that twenty-year warranty or that twenty-five-year warranty. So, as a private sector person, I'm always trying to figure out, okay, how is the best spend of our company's dollars? And as an elected official, it's the same, no different for our taxpayers. What is the best spend for our taxpayers? How can we maximize it? How can we take on more projects that will benefit more communities? So, that's my take. Thank you. And I, I do appreciate all the great partnerships and I, I think we recognize how important it is to our community.
We spent some time at the last public hearing, trying to understand a little bit of the costs and, and benefits of, of working together on this project or disaggregating the systems. And I'd like to try and get a better handle on the cost of disaggregating, if in fact that is the direction this council is headed. So can you just try your best to delineate for us what new costs we can expect going forward should we decide to not pursue this, this collaboration?
Let me get that information.
Right now, we have one control system, temperature control, energy management, that manages the geothermal system. So it will definitely be separated because the systems are different. We have the ability to talk to that system from our staff location at our shop down by Lincoln High School. Doesn't mean we can't have controls on your system, but they will be totally different, uh, different system, different, uh, communication, different set points, a lot of, just a lot of differences because they're an isolated system. So, that's not a significant amount, but it is a cost, probably a labor, time, management cost. I think on the maintenance side, we had talked about just, um, our staff come out and change filters, do regular routine, preventive maintenance on a monthly basis. Doesn't mean they can't do that, but I think it will be a different system. Uh, it's not that it can't be maintained. I think though, probably the fact that it's older equipment will probably need a little bit more attention than the geothermal system. So there will be additional costs. I can't give you dollars today, uh, but I think it will cost more time and money to maintain the facility.
Yeah, I think some of the things that we talked about, and, and we did talk about kind of a comparison of the maintenance cost. And I don't know that the numbers are as significant to me as the ratio. The engineers estimate that to maintain the boiler system is gonna be twice the cost of maintaining the ground-cupped heat pump system. There's some systems that'll have to be replaced. We've talked a little bit about this. The chiller unit, um, will have to be replaced sometime, probably within about the first ten years. That's estimated about seventy-five thousand dollars. There's also some, um, some mechanical equipment associated, pardon me, associated with the boilers that have to be replaced on a more frequent cycle than the heat pump system as well.
I know there'll be some additional piping, new piping to reroute to connect to the, the new source, the boilers and cooling. And I know some modified duct work will need to take place in the building. So there will be some changes like that that will need to play, take place. I think all the other cosmetic things were gonna happen in either project. We were gonna do a lot of painting and upgrades that just need to be done after twenty-some years. So as I understand it, the other upgrades, um, are included regardless of which option we go with, correct?
They are. They are.
And that includes the roof also?
It does. And I think it's really, there was some discussion about would be better off to use an adhered rubber membrane roof or the modified bitumen roof that Scott talked a little bit about.
Okay, so the options that we're looking at actually have to do with whether we go geothermal or the, I'm sorry.
The boiler system.
Boiler system, yeah. Yeah, I really, yeah, that's really, I think, what's before the council is, is kind of that long-term, that policy decision about what the appropriate life cycle cost savings for an environmentally less, a system that's more costly in the near term, but that will save costs over the longer-term operation of the building.
Thank you.
Scott, what was the cost of the geothermal field at Belmont? Do you recall?
It's about thirty-two hundred dollars of boring. So one boring is a three-hundred-foot deep well. I think we had a hundred and eighty, roughly, boreings underneath the parking lot on the north end of the site. So that's roughly a quarter million dollars, close to that.
Thanks.
One of the questions that has come up in our discussions about this has been, you know, the, whether or not there will be innovations in environmental efficiencies that would allow us to capture savings and make a good investment without going to the lengths of geothermal. What is LPS's take on that? I mean, you obviously are investing in geothermal, but why do you, why do you make that investment? And what, do you consider lower-cost alternatives at any point in other buildings with the idea that, that new technologies may yield better results for cheaper, sooner?
First buildings we opened were Campbell, Cabot, Maxi, and Roper in ninety-five. Those were the first ground-source heat pumps. Technology, the efficiencies of the units has definitely changed over time. But there's a lot of other technologies that have made us more efficient. Heat recovery. So when you exhaust seventy-five degree heat from the restrooms, you capture the heat, let the exhaust exit, capture that heat, reinvest it into your building to heat. So there's technologies like that in heat recovery. Temperature controls that we've talked about. And so, we have a reservation management system where you can reserve a space, and it will bring the room to optimum temperature at the time it's reserved, and it'll go back to night and weekend setback after the room is no longer in use. Sensors. If you have bodies in the room, it will bring in more fresh air, because we're breathing and creating CO2. And so if there's people exit the room, we actually have sensors where the lights will go off if there's no motion after so many minutes, and less fresh air will be brought in. So those are all new technologies from the very first time, and we continue to invest and install those in our facilities. And so it's made us more efficient, even though the initial heat pump may still be the original, but it was very efficient at the time. And so, we're going to prolong the life of the heat pump as long as we can. And when we put the new one in, it'll probably be more efficient. But all those other things we've added to it make the entire system much better. So, we adapt to new technology, I guess, to answer your question.
So you see them as complementary, not substitutes? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Do we have others who'd like to speak to this item?
Mike Morosen, I think the efficiency is great. And just to understand, you know, the pumps that pump the hot water from the boiler system is a little different than pumps that pump the water in the closed-loop system from the geothermal. I don't know if any of you remember Glenn Chekel, I used to work on his boiler system. And there's a difference in the price of pumps, too. And you want to, you want to spend the money for a good pump that's going to last you a long time, that's made out of brass. And if any of you have pumps, your sump pumps in the basement, you can buy the cheap pump, or you can buy the one with the brass impellers, and that makes a big difference. So those are some of the things. And then the temperature of the water, you need to filter the water so that the calcium and that, you know, because sometimes with the boiler, you're going to have to go in there and scrape some of that calcium off. It's the same thing with valves and everything that you have in a hot water system. So, they're different systems, but there's a cost factor there, as opposed to the geothermal, as opposed to the boiler system, because you're running hot water through radiators and that. So, and maintenance is a little bit different on a boiler system than the geothermal. So, I just want to give you that, you know, because I've been involved, you know, with boiler system. I've got a friend that still has a boiler in his house, you know, with that. So, and we've gone in and worked on it. So, you know, just a little bit, so you kind of get an understanding on that cost.
Thank you.
If you don't mind signing in after you're done, just go ahead and take your testimony. Thank you.
Absolutely. Glad to go on. Well, happy to be here. My name is Kurt Donaldson, and I come today to ask you to approve this as proposed by the Park Department. But I understand that you have another week before you will vote on it. And what I would urge you to do in this week is to ask some more questions and do some more thinking about this. I have some background in this as an amateur, and I've served for about twenty years on the Construction Review Committee for the public schools. And I also have experience in the private sector with ground-source heat pumps, going back to nineteen eighty-five, which precedes the Lincoln Public Schools by quite a bit. But what I would say is that you have two bad choices. This is, and it's going to take some real thinking. The first bad choice is rather obvious, and that is to spend an extra four hundred thousand dollars for an all-new geothermal system. It's bad, because four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars is more than a hundred and two thousand dollars. Even with energy escalating at four percent a year, according to the data I worked off of, which I think you got also from ETI, this sheet here, it shows the system not breaking even for the first fourteen years. Well, so that's the first bad choice. Although I would suggest that in looking a little bit deeper at that choice, the numbers even out. And they even out by looking at the life cycle cost analysis another way. And that is by annualizing the capital costs. In other words, take all the capital costs, and I looked at them over twenty-four years, and just put an annual number in for the capital cost, and an annual number for the operating, for the energy cost and maintenance over a twenty-four-year period. And interestingly, when you do that, you know, the operating costs are much greater on the boiler and chiller system, thirty-eight thousand dollars, thirty-eight thousand nine three three. The capital cost annualized is only eight thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And that does include replacement of the existing rooftop units, the seventy-five thousand dollars. Whereas, you look over on the geothermal side, you've got fuel costs compared to thirty-eight thousand, your fuel costs are twenty-three thousand. Your capital costs are much higher, at about twenty-one thousand a year. But when you add those up and compare them, interestingly, over twenty-four years, the annualized cost is actually higher on the boiler system. It's forty-seven thousand dollars versus forty-four thousand dollars a year, forty-four thousand six hundred. That's a difference of about sixty-five thousand dollars overall over that period. But it is actually positive for the geothermal systems, rather surprisingly. And if you put in a residual value for the well field of eighty-five thousand dollars, which would be the Park Department's share, you actually can come up with a difference, I think, of about a hundred and, a positive a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So you reduce your, your capital cost differential to about two hundred and forty thousand dollars versus four hundred thousand dollars. This is the kind of analysis I became accustomed to, working with Lincoln Electric System, as I worked on these systems and was a member of the LES Board. Does that beep for?
You have one more minute, sorry.
Okay. Well, the, the real problem, though, is with the base choice, which would seem to be an economy in the first case. But when you look at the operating cost per square foot of the existing system, you find that, I actually believe in my calculations, if you go and lock in the current system and the current costs with a boiler, you're going to be running a dollar and eighty-six cents a square foot. That cost is masked by having the heat pump system in the gym. Your average cost is about one, one-twenty-one. But the gym is operating at seventy-six cents a square foot, whereas everything else is operating at a hundred and eight, a dollar eighty. And there is nothing in the school system that operates at that kind of cost. And by comparison, we operate the F Street Rec Center at a cost of ninety-nine cents. So, yep.
You know, Kurt, I have a couple of questions on, how did you estimate the electric utility cost? Because, you know, with the, with the new roof structure, that should take advantage of some of the increased insulation, because as I understand, the roof had been leaking, and they, I guess, said that the R factor would be about a thirty. Why, why don't we see a greater reduction in the utility cost, particularly electric, when you're switching out all the fluorescent fixtures to LED fixtures? Why isn't there a, a lower utility cost compared to the existing utility cost?
Yeah, I think the difference is because right now, the gym is not air-conditioned. So that's about twenty-five percent of your cost.
So with the gym, because we are partnering with Lincoln Public School on the gym, so with the gym being temperature-controlled, going forward, we should see some reduction in the utility cost, but they've only, on the calculations that have been provided, they just increased.
Well, we're going from air, from not air-conditioned to air-conditioned in ten thousand square feet. At the Lincoln Public Schools, we've actually been able to add air conditioning to schools and still see the bills go down. But in this case, I think the city is still required to pay half the cost of operating the gym.
And so you're saying that we're not going to see any benefit of adding the air conditioning, but we're going to see increased costs to our share of the cost?
Well, the benefit we see, and I could speak better to this than I, is that we get an air-conditioned facility for about the same cost. But the difference in the choices, if you would allow me another thirty seconds, I would indulge me, thank you, thank you, is that if you go geothermal, you're inflation-protected, because you're only subjecting inflation, subjected to inflation at seventy-six cents a square foot. Whereas, if you lock in the current cost for twenty-four years, you're subjected to inflation on a dollar and eighty-six cents a square foot. So, you're two and a half more times vulnerable to inflation by locking in the present system. So, that is the risk. The costs without inflation are just about a wash. But with inflation, I think the choice is clear, if you think about it. Thank you.
I guess, when I look at the equipment costs, there's such a huge disparity in the equipment cost over the twenty-five-year lifespan. So, if you reapplied that funding a little bit differently, you could reinvest in equipment after that twenty-five-year period in something that is most likely much more efficient.
But in the meantime, you've been spending a dollar and eighty-six cents a square foot. You've spent the same money, you haven't saved any money. You really haven't saved it. You've just spent it on, on electricity and gas. It's a false, it's a false economy. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Seeing none? Please call the next item.
All right. Next is item thirty-eight, amending chapter twenty-four point forty-two of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to regulation of property transfers with onsite systems by amending section twenty-four point forty-two point zero seven zero to remove review fee provisions and repealing section twenty-four point forty-two point zero seven zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
Thank you. Judy Hallstead, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. You'll be happy to know that both this issue and the next item that I'll be up for are going to be briefed this evening. With item thirty-eight, in amending twenty-four forty-two, all we're doing is removing the requirement that we have to be paid the fee prior to us issuing our recommendation. That's all we're doing. And it is to help with the business transfer. Because what happens is sometimes the property owner is paying the fee when they're selling the property. Sometimes, it is the individual who's actually doing the onsite system inspection who pays the fee and then gets the fee back from the property owner. And sometimes, those costs are incurred as part of the closing costs. And so, what we're trying to do is just simplify the process by removing from city ordinance the requirement that that has to be paid before we'll give our recommendation. We're trying to make it easier for property transfers to happen, and not to be held up. If they want to pay it at closing, they can pay it at closing. We've done eighteen hundred of these property transfers we believe will be paid. City ordinance requires that we be paid. Certainly, we've made other provisions in the past when we have not been paid, and we can do that. So we don't believe we're not going to get paid. We just think we need to simplify it and make it easier for folks. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to testify on this item? All right. Please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. Next is thirty-nine, amending chapter eight point two oh of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to Lincoln Food Code by amending section eight point two zero point zero five zero to adopt the state food code and repealing section eight point two zero point zero five zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing.
Okay. Again, Judy Hallstead, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. What we're doing in this item is, as you are aware, the Health Department has an agreement with the Nebraska Department of Agriculture to provide for our food safety program. So that is through an agreement that the Health Department has to provide for the inspecting of food establishments in our jurisdiction. As a requirement of that, we have to implement the state food code when we're going about doing our inspections. That state food code is based on the Federal Drug Administration's code. In twenty thirteen, the FDA updated their code in twenty sixteen. So just this last year, the Nebraska Legislature adopted the new Nebraska Pure Food Code. And as a result, we are updating by reference that twenty sixteen Nebraska food code, and then adding the provision that we would automatically enforce the updates that the Nebraska Legislature passes to the Nebraska food code. So we're doing two things. We're updating to Nebraska's food code that the Legislature passed last year in twenty sixteen, and then we're putting into city ordinance that those would automatically be updated. So we don't have to come back each time. As a cautionary note, I think that if there were any significant issues, we would bring those forward to you, and we would let you know that if we had any concerns about that. But the reality is, our agreement with the Nebraska Department of Ag is that we have to enforce whatever that Nebraska food code is. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Judy.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. I will call items forty through forty-two together. They are annexation one six zero zero nine, annexing approximately thirty point thirty-three acres of property. Change of zone one six zero three one, application of Dwayne Rogge, Hanover Two LLC, Hanover Three LLC, and RF Properties Incorporated, for a change from AG Agricultural to I Two Industrial Park, and approving a conditional annexation and zoning agreement between the city, Dwayne Rogge, Hanover Two, Hanover Three, and RF Properties for the development and annexation of property located at North Seventieth and Arbor Road.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. Here today on behalf of Dwayne Rogge and his various entities, that he owns the property up there on North Seventieth and Arbor Road. I want to go ahead and put up this exhibit. I think it's going to be the quickest and easiest way to show you the context of what we're trying to achieve here. Dwayne owns this hundred and sixty acres bounded by Seventieth, Arbor, the half-mile line here and the half-mile line here. This part here, I want, has been zoned and annexed for some time. What kind of precipitated this was there was a, he had a tenant with a rock crushing operation going on up there in the corner, and it was still zoned ag. And it was more permanent in nature than temporary. The permit they had was for a temporary rock crusher. So, we need to get it into a zoning district that allowed it to be permanent. And so, as part of the process, the Planning Department requested that we go through a preliminary plating procedure for the entire hundred and sixty- go through a preliminary plating procedure for the entire hundred and sixty acres, mainly to determine where would our access points be on Arbor and Seventieth Street in the future when future further subdivision takes place. And so we've done that, worked with Public Works on that, and everybody's amenable with what we've laid out. So we have a future guideline for the property. And then there were some restrictions. Rock-crushing is a permitted use in I Two. That's why we desired I Two in that area. The Health Department had some concerns about some of the dirtier uses, if you will, with our proximity to Abbott Sports Complex, even though we discussed the fact that when Abbott was permitted, they were warned they were next to an industrial district, and certain things like this could happen. But between Dwayne Rogge and his buyer for the northern part of the property, they agreed that they would live with those restrictions. And so that was addressed in the conditional annexation agreement. Some of the dirtier uses are prohibited in the I Two. So with that, our prelim plat is dependent on the change of zone and the annexation. So we'd ask for your approval on that.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right. Please call the next item.
All right. Next are items forty-three through forty-five. Annexation one six zero zero eight, annexing approximately five point twelve acres. Approving the annexation agreement for Van Dorn Street Coalition between JLWLP, Claire Cooley and Linda Cooley, Roger Graff, Matt Adole LLC, Darrell Lee Bohack and Christie Bohack, Christopher Kidwell, and the city for the phased development and annexation of property, and amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen seventeen eighteen biennial budget for both fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen, twenty seventeen eighteen, to increase the total appropriations by four point two million for Stevens Creek Sanitary Trunk Sewer CIP project to accommodate additional development. This is at Van Dorn Street, west of South Ninety-first Street.
Good evening. My name's Kent Seacrest, representing the Van Dorn Coalition, which is a membership of seven different property owners that have gotten together and worked together on about three hundred and twelve acres to master plan. With me today is Mark Palmer with Olson Associates, who's been the engineer trying to put all the major pieces together on our master plan. There's three items. We are talking about a phased annexation agreement. We also are bringing in the first piece of the annexation, as well as an amendment to your capital improvement budget to authorize additional revenue bonds to help fund what we call the big Stevens Creek line. Let me start by indicating that this has been in the works for quite a while. We have been, the city council and the Planning Commission and the Plan Department have worked on amending the comprehensive plan to allow the extension of the Stevens Creek line. Right now, it stops at Holdridge, but it will go south of O Street. And when it does, this kind of darker red area will be developable. And so now we are showing that ready to be developed. And if your eyes are really good, you're seeing the coalition land tucked in there in a blue or black outline shape as part of this. Again, we're just north of Van Dorn, north of Firethorne, between South Eighty-Fourth Street and South Ninety-Eighth Street. And so we've now amended the comprehensive plan to bring this area into the city. We have also been working with staff and the property owners and with Lincoln Public Schools on a master plan for the three hundred and twelve acres, the different land uses, the different road configurations, where we'd get access on the various arterial road networks, the trail network, the watershed plan, and where the parks. Right now, we're proposing with LPS, a new school site up in the middle of the development with a new neighborhood park right next to it. We also have a trail network that would continue the one that's already out there on Eighty-Fourth Street through the development along the water feature as well. And we have different types of land uses, but mainly, this is single-family dwellings with some multifamily opportunities as well. The corner might be commercial, depending, neighborhood commercial, depending on whether or not the market likes that corner or not. So we've been working, again, hard with everybody on the master plan. And with that comes the utility plan. And we've gotten consensus with the city staff on all the components for the utilities along the way, the water, the roads we've talked about. But the big one is the sewer, which, again, when you did your capital improvement budget last year and the CIP, and the comprehensive plan amendment, you master planned to build the extension of the Stevens Creek. And that opens this area. Right now, again, this is Holdridge up here. The big Stevens Creek line is the blue line. And by bringing it south of O, we then can bring the yellow line back into the Lincoln area. And what we are logically doing is, the creek goes away from the city, so we got to bring it back. But it's logical to annex going from west to east, where you're closest to your urban roads, to fire departments, your other facilities, including water. And so that's why we have to build sewer way out and then bring it back. But we open up a huge, huge area for new rooftops and new community in this part of Lincoln. We have worked out fifty pages of an annexation agreement, various phasing programs, how it would work, the sewer design, and right away is supposed to be done this year. And the construction of the sewer line is supposed to be done December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. So that'll bring on a lot of new homes and opportunities. We want to thank the city staff, Rick Payo, Dave Carey, Steve Hendrickson, Brian Will. The Public Works team has been very helpful, Bob Simmering, Brian Kramer, and Dave Beirstorf to work out the details. We had neighborhood meeting. We had Planning Commission recommended our annexation five to zero. And we stand here ready to answer any questions you might have.
Right.
About how many buildable lots are going in this area?
Well, I'm going to get Mark up here. We're three hundred and twelve acres. We probably will average three dwellings per acre.
In terms of single fam, I'm sorry, Mark Palmer, Olson Associates, in terms of single-family lots, there's about seven hundred residential lots. There's also plans for a couple areas for apartments, senior living, and kind of some flex space that could be commercial, could be more higher density.
Thank you.
Jane?
Mark, maybe this question is for you. You know, I'm looking at along South Eighty-Fourth Street. How does some of the infrastructure improvements impact all that property from Holdridge all the way down to Van Dorn along Eighty-Fourth? Right. It seems like it's in the white area, but...
You're looking at these properties right to here?
Are they all tied into the, some of the...
They chose not to be members of the coalition. There's actually, there's an LPS parcel. LPS owns this property right here, and the adjacent property owners chose not to be part of this coalition at this time.
The, those properties today have a water line in Eighty-Fourth. Those properties have pavement called Eighty-Fourth Street that it's Four Lane. Most of, some of those areas can be sewered. With the extension of the sewer line in front of you today, they'll all be able to be sewored. So they will come in to the city.
Thank you.
We saw in the staff report, well, you know, today we're looking at annexing just five point one-two acres, but the bigger picture is the two hundred and seventy acres. Can you speak to that a little bit? And is that all coalition, or is that just in general the part of the city that potentially could be incorporated?
Because it'll take about two years to get the sewer there. We don't want to annex prematurely. But the law department felt we had to annex something, so we chose a little five-acre piece. When the sewer does arrive within that two-year window, I don't know what the big first push, but it'll be a serious piece of real estate that will be annexed. In fact, you might see a couple of different parcels of this coalition land be annexed. It also probably opens up, again, other parcels that could be annexed to our north and northeast, kind of around the O Street quarter. So stay tuned for those. I think they'll come too.
So when you're talking about the seven hundred residential lots, are you talking about the entire two hundred and seventy acres?
Yes, that'd be the entire two hundred and seventy. And we'll be looking next year. The plan is for the sewer line to be under construction next year. And then during that time, that's when preliminary plats and actual construction will be occurring. We'd like to have lots basically ready for building construction. If not, proceed it a couple of months and building construction when that sewer line finally makes it to this point and is hooked up. So trying to coordinate schedules and work with city staff on making sure we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would others like to speak to this, these items?
Mike Morosen. The only question that I have, are any lift stations for the sewer going to be required? And if so, if these lift stations are used, will they be pumping during peak periods or off periods?
No pump stations. Hall gravity.
All right, good. And our Public Works Director, I believe, wants to speak, address an item?
Nikki Esposito, Public Works and Utilities Director. And I thought you might be curious about the funding for this project and how we're going to manage it. We will use a combination of revenue rates, one point six million, and then some revenue bond proceeds, an additional two point six million. Fortunately, the project itself is already programmed in the CIP. You had the wisdom to do that last time at budget time. So what we're asking for is authority to spend a little bit more to accommodate the development. Do you have any questions on funding?
Well, so are there other things that are also in the CIP that will be bumped or moved down the list because of the priority of this project?
That's possible. We feel comfortable and confident that we have the one point six additional in the revenue rates currently in revenue right now. We will need the bond proceeds. We need to pursue a bond next year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, for the additional two point six. So, but currently, we feel pretty comfortable with the one point six in revenue rates right now. We don't have any identified projects that have to be bumped as a result of that one point six million.
Thank you.
The other thing I will, I want, I want you to recognize too, is that as the developments come in, impact fees will also come in, and that will offset any future rate increases in the future. So just be thinking of that. That helps with the one point six in the cash flow going into the future.
And Nikki, just to clarify, you're talking about revenue bonds. Can you explain how those work for people who may be thinking we're talking about general obligation bonds?
Right. So today, we are asking for the authority for, to expand additional dollars and at a later time to package a bond issued together. So we leverage the rates and revenues that are projected to come in in order to bond a project first. So it's not up for a vote of the people. This body decides whether or not we pursue the revenue bonds. And we use our rates to leverage those. If it helps too, this means an additional principal and interest payment of two hundred and eighty thousand, and those payments will begin in twenty eighteen.
Is that the twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year as opposed to twenty seventeen?
The twenty eighteen nineteen fiscal year. And by then, by the end of twenty eighteen is when the project will be completed. So again, we will see those impact fees coming in, and we'll do our rate models for the next biennium and bring that forward to you to see the impacts. But we do not anticipate rate increases because of this development and servicing this line.
And just to be clear, we were expecting these costs, just not as soon as we're seeing them come forward because the growth has accelerated. Is that correct?
That's a great point, because we're actually moving the project forward in order to accommodate the project schedule. So we didn't have dollars dedicated in sixteen seventeen. We're pushing one point six million of design forward. So it's not just that we're asking for additional funding. We're moving it forward in the biennial budget so that we can accommodate design right away and construction.
All right. Thank you. Would others like to speak to items forty-three through forty-five? All right. Please call the next item.
All right. Next is item forty-six, change of zone one seven zero zero one, application of Ingrid Bangers and McDonald's Corporation State Site two six zero zero two seven for a change from H-one Interstate Commercial District to H-three Highway Commercial District on property located at thirty-one hundred Northwest Twelfth Street.
Does the applicant here? Oh, great. Oh, maybe not. Do we have an applicant here for item forty-six?
David Carey with the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department. I don't see the applicant here, so I think I'll just go through a general overview of this. There's a request here to change the zoning from H-one to H-three. The H-three provides for quite a bit more flexibility on the site. The actual application is for a new gas station and convenience store. We, the city, requested that we bring in the other parcel to the south of it, which would have been one of the very last remaining H-one zone parcels. And again, the H-three would allow for some more flexibility overall moving into the future for both sites. So we are in agreement with this change.
Okay. Any questions for David? Carl?
Yeah, just to be clear, I see McDonald's listed here. So there, I know where the McDonald's is out there, by the entrance to the airport, essentially. So is this the property to the south of that?
I believe it is to the south of that. I'm going to try to remember. Visualize it on my head right now, but I think that's it. I think it's, actually, now I think it is behind it, actually.
Any other questions for David? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? All right. Please call the next item.
All right. I'll call items forty-seven and forty-eight together. They are street and alley vacation one six zero zero six, vacating a portion of the north thirty, north Thirty-Fifth Street right-of-way stub directly north of Superior Street, and the related change of zone, application of Robert Okabe for a change to designate existing R-three zoned property as a planned unit development district, and approval of the development plan for the Terrace Gardens Planned Unit Development, which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance, land subdivision ordinance, and design standards to allow for a mix of single-family, single-family attached, commercial, and agricultural uses located at Superior Street and North Thirty-Fifth Street.
Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director. It is the real estate division that's inside the Urban Development Department that framed your inter-office memo. This is about eight thousand six hundred square feet. It is identified in this hatchmarked area, and it represents city right-of-way that we do not need for what eventually will become North Thirty-Fifth Street. That will in fact run to the west and into the project area. There is a small amount of concrete and a drainage ditch in this area. We put a value at five thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents for the property, based on the fact that it has limited use. There is some drainage that is responsible, and it really only makes sense in the possession of one and only one landholder, and that's the development. Taking one step back, one of the exciting things about this development is that it will be new housing costs at a significant reduction compared to the norm in Lincoln, Nebraska. Lincoln, Nebraska currently averages new single-family homes at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a house. Most people know that Lincoln has a low-cost housing, but that's for existing housing. Our new housing is much more like the rest of the country and much more expensive. So to get new home construction at under two hundred thousand dollars opens up opportunities, I think, for potential ultimate single-family homeowners. And that makes the project valuable, and we'd like to help out, and we'd like to vacate property that we are not using, nor do we have an intent to use.
Any questions for Dave?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Are we, Teresa, are we calling these together? Are we going to have a presentation on forty-eight as well right now, or?
These went together.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair, councilmembers, thanks for your time. Marty Fortney, thirty-six hundred Calvert. It's exciting to see the private and public sectors come together. I wanted to know that. We've had a lot of meetings. We've kind of gone through the gauntlet, if you will. And the outlook and the outcome of what the project is... the outlook and the outcome of what the project has become is largely in part to getting input from very, quite a few different apartments and people that have expertise in it. And I'd like to take, just take a moment and share with you real quickly some of the highlights. The planned, this, the planned unit development, the epicenter that's designed around is a working farm right here in the middle. The design here was to put a working farm in place for the association to enjoy in the homes here. There's just roughly about 100 home units here. And one of the benefits of the, the ground, when I looked at it for purchase, or one of the challenges, I should say, is there is a large amount of green space due to floodway and waterway concerns. We spent a lot of time visiting with NRD and Watershed Management to make sure that we had a clearer scope of improving the area for drainage and not causing any problems. And I think we've accomplished that through all the meetings with them. Tim Gurken at Clark Anderson, our civil engineer, was very instrumental putting that together. The, the goal that I have in mind here for this working farm area is referred to field-to-table living. It's kind of a buzzword that you see. You don't see it around here. I'm not sure there's anything like it anywhere near here. We were able to find about 200 different developments across the country, primarily on the east and west coast. The thing that makes it work here with this property is that we have about 60% green space. It's not buildable, so we were trying to find a way to utilize it properly to make it sustainable and to be able to pay for itself. The green space has a cost to operate it. The goal is for the association to be able to enjoy the green space and the trails that surround the area. The RV park along the perimeter here is set back on the hill, and we spent quite a bit of time with NRD, particularly on that, and they were comfortable with that along the side. That's gonna help offset the cost for running the farm and the, and the green space in between here. There is some potential income with the commercial garden space. Ben at Community Crops was very instrumental in help doing soil testing and run some performance on how a small commercial farmer could go in there. And we looked at some income potential here. So we combined the RV park income with the gardening income. Then we were able to maintain and operate this green space effectively over the years. I have a little smaller one here. Let me, let me just throw that out Tim was able to design and capture all the water. Instead of putting a rain barrel under each gutter, the city has a pretty extensive program with that. We're capturing all the rooftops and all the street water. We're improving the waterway here, the water retention. We're gonna mix that with a low volume, I mean, a high-volume, low-pressure well, and mix the water. We're gonna be using that to irrigate the crops along the side here, this open waterway, and we can gravity feed the gardens so we can use the water in a responsible manner to, to irrigate all the vegetable gardens on the side here. There was a lot of conversations that we had with Brandon at Long-Term Planning in terms of visualizing what, what the city sees for value here, that mixed with how we can afford to do it. Steve and Andrew at Planning were very critical components. Lincoln Food Council had a chance to meet with those folks, a very interesting group, have a lot of great ideas. I could spend an hour going over their ideas. It was very exciting. So in terms of composting, there's an animal component. Had a lot of meeting with Health Department, and they, we're allowed up to 22 farm animals on the property, which is unusual for this location. I would only do that if we find the right personnel to operate and, and to do that, i.e. 22 large animals, cows or horses. But the only way we would do the animals in here.
You have one minute.
Thank you. The only way we'd do that in here is if we had the right person managing that so that it was appropriate. The goal is to construct laneway cottages. They'll be similar to this. This'll be the similar look here. I think our homes here, I'll be doing the home construction as well. I think we'll have homes, this could be as low as 125,000, be 900 to 1,200 square feet. This'll be a flavor of what I've been visiting with, with the city planning department and the Lincoln, the building safety. There's some more traditional views. We also incorporated and looked at, last thing here, is the parking. When we have higher density, Tim and I have designed a low-rise median in between the street with a, I think we went to an 80-foot right-of-way instead of 60. So we have, we've created additional 44 parking stalls, and these little egg shapes represent green space so we can make the streetscape a little more appealing with as many cars. Ann Post and from, is our legal counsel and Tim Gurken are here, and we would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Could you just show us on the, on the layout there, the site plan, where the cottages are? I assume they're the little facilities on the eastern edge, and then are those larger homes?
Yes, ma'am.
To the west. Do you wanna talk about the differences there?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
There is, along the edge, the perimeter edge here, because there's such a beautiful view to the east here and the southeast, to be able to have a higher density with this amount of green space. The proportion with the green space is abnormal, abnormally high. So these would represent the laneway cottages, and, and that is a little bit of a buzzword. You don't see it here on any initial, any large scale. This is probably the only project like this. And that's why we had to consider that parking so carefully to make sure. But each home has at least one single-stall garage, parking inside and one stall in front of it. So each home has two stalls, and then we have the additional 44 parking stalls throughout the street. So these are the laneway cottages, and then these would be traditional townhomes, single level, most likely maybe a couple, two stories levels along here. And then this would be single-family homes up in this area. We're also planning a, there'd be onsite property manager that I'll have for the RV park and the farm. There's a barn here with an attached greenhouse and a residence on the side of it with a corral here for people that may potentially have a horse or two.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Ann Post. I'm council for the developer. My address is 1248 O Street, Suite 600. First, I wanted to take a moment to thank Planning for the work that they have done to work with the development team to make this project possible. As you've noticed from the overview, it's a very unique project. It involved a lot of working with the planning development to make the unique elements come together. This project, this property is a challenge to develop. I think as, as we've noted, there's a significant portion of it is in the floodway, and it took a lot of creativity to come together with something that not only is going to utilize this project, but also put it, make it into the asset that this development will be for the Lincoln community. So as Mr. Fortney touched on, there's se, this project brings together several unique elements. We have the, we have the farm ground you see right here. That will include both land for a community garden, managed farm ground, and a small, potential for small livestock raising operations. That is meant to be an amenity as the neighborhood, as the neighborhood wishes and to develop along with the neighborhood, how they wish to develop that. This agricultural community will have a focus on healthy eating, farm-to-table, and farm-to-table living, and really have the elements of a cooperative community that bring together and create a strong sense of community in the area. As we discussed, there's the laneway cottage housing that brings in housing at a lower price point than is typical in Lincoln, but also a high-quality housing that will have a broad appeal to a large diversity of real estate purchasers. And finally, there's the RV park that is there, the developer has identified a need for that in Lincoln. It is a location with a great view right over Salt Creek, and the income from that is gonna help this unique development and help make this farm ground sustainable. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Questions? I was gonna ask about the, I think that the, there are some conditions required for approval of the RV park. I think they had to do with being close to the waterway and just making sure that they were protected from flood. It, have those conditions been met since Planning Commission? Have they been revised appropriately?
Yes. We have worked with Planning Commission on those. There will be an evacuation plan. There, there will be, for, there'll be an evacuation plan. There will be fire hydrants, as you'll see. There's also access to Salt Creek for the NRD to be able to maintain Salt Creek. And so, yes, we've been working with Planning, and those have been addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right. Please call the next item.
That actually concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolution, item 36 is the advertising agreement between Parks and Rec and Benchcraft Company. This was introduced by Fellers.
Second.
Moved in Fellers' absence by Roy and seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rebold.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions are items 37 through 48. Ordinances, third reading, item 49, approving the 1222 P Street redevelopment agreement, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Just wanna say thank you to, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, it's just, just a great, great project. I mean, a historic building that's being repurposed for, for, again, a need to provide residential space in downtown Lincoln as well as some retail options that, that are needed in the city. So, so thanks for those working on this project.
I'll just echo it. It's nice to see a historic facade being preserved, yet reimagined and repurposed in a way that's more functional for modern times. So pleased to see this project. Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rebold.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 50 is amending the fiscal year 1617 CIP to authorize and appropriate $470,000 in TIP funds for the project, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rebold.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 51 is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $470,000 aggregate principal amount of 1222 P Street redevelopment project tax allocation bonds, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rebold.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 52 is amending Chapter 8.32 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to solid wastes by amending section 8.32.010 to change the definitions of building rubbish and demolition debris to include roof shingles and other roof coverings in those definitions, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Well, we heard during the public hearing that this is a real practical response to the hailstorms last May that destroyed so many, damaged so many roofs. So we're looking at how to deal with all the, the shingles, and by allowing them to be placed in the North 48th Street landfill, which doesn't have a liner, we have some benefits there in terms of trapping gases. And then we also extend the life of the bluff road landfill. So happy to support this. Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rebold.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next is item 53, change of zone 16044, application of Southwest Folsom Development for a change from R4 to R3 on property located at South Folsom and West Amaranth Lane, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Roy. Discussion? Jane.
Well, I have a question for David Carey, but I think it pertains more to the second one on, on the waivers and the pedestrian easement. So.
Okay.
I think it'll hold off to the next one.
Okay. Any other discussion on the change of zone? As we understand this, this is actually a down zone. This was zoned to R4, and we're taking it down to R3. Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Gayler Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rebold.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next is item 54, preliminary plat 16008, appeal of John Wilbeck, James Erbauer, Michael and Anata Sullivan, Heidi Wright, Larry Fromm, Matthew Thomas, and Jody Cranzel from the Planning Commission's approval of a new R3 residential district pre-plat with requested waivers to subdivision regulations and design standards on property generally located at South Folsom and West Amaranth Lane, introduced by Fellers.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Carl. Discussion and?
And if Dave could come forward and give us an update on where, what is the status of the waivers, particularly for the pedestrian easement for sidewalks?
Yes, and we, I do have a handout for everybody. I'll just hand it off to Teresa. And this is a memo that was sent to you over the weekend. There was a question from Councilwoman Rebold at the hearing two weeks ago that was basically a request for some follow-up on easements, pedestrian easements. What this does is it provide just a quick explanation of why and how they're required. And then on page two, there's actually a summary of some recent, this is not, certainly not to be a full history of this, but it does provide some recent examples of what we have required for pedestrian easements, what we have agreed to with our development partners that come in for their approvals to waive, and then a very limited amount of those that are actually, end up being, go to, forward to public hearing with some disagreement. So you'll see there are some examples. 64 of the easements have been approved, agreed to, and they move forward as part of the approval. 19 that could have been required were agreed to that they were, did not make sense for various reasons, could be physical obstructions, things like that, but made sense that we had agreement with. And then only two out of all these that are used as examples as being somewhat under, you know, disagreement and moving forward. But then obviously, whatever the decision is in the approval process, we move forward with what is agreed to. One of those is in this, this proposed preliminary plat. I believe it's block seven is the one that we are in disagreement on, but that would be one of the very few that we have recently in dispute.
So the way the language reads, and what, what is before us today, is that we're giving approval to all the waivers. Is that correct, or no?
That, that would be what has been brought forward to you from the Planning Commission. I believe it's, you have the, the ability to make a decision on your own at this point. But if you follow through on what the Planning Commission gave, brought forward to you, that it would be waiver of all of the potential pedestrian easements.
So, so to be clear, a yes vote would be to keep the waivers in place?
Correct.
And if we wish to amend it to leave at least the one that was recommended by the planning department, but not the planning commissioners?
Correct. I believe you need to have the motion to amend at that point.
Okay. Cindy?
Thank you. Okay, so as I understood it, this is one of the concerns, I think, of Councilwoman, is the sidewalk that for exit from the division itself, which I understood is a little over 1,000 feet. 1,000 feet is the rule of thumb we use, correct?
Correct.
And there's, and I can't remember. I'm sorry, I don't have my notes in front of me. A little over 1,000 feet, and my understanding or my recollection was that there were probably four homes that were affected.
There are, in our calculation, there would be slightly more than that. I think that was the testimony that the applicant gave that said four. But we would say that there is about a, a block's worth of, of homes that could use the pedestrian easement if it was built, and it would provide them some more direct routes.
Okay. Thank you. Carl?
Yeah, Mr. Carey, a couple, three years ago, a development in northwest Lincoln was an existing development, but there was an easement and walkway in, in one of these situations. And, and it was, it was described as a cattle chute, and that's pretty much- And it was, it was described as a cattle chute and that's pretty much what it was. I mean, two tall fences on both sides, bad visibility, bad things happened there in terms of mischief with, you know, teenagers and others. So how do you prevent those kinds of things in terms of design?
Yeah, and I think the one that you're, Councilman Eskridge, I'm referring to, we also had that a little bit offset as well. So that was a little bit the worst of all worlds for a pedestrian easement. Actually, since then, what we have done is we've updated our regulations on this in that we are requiring a 15-foot easement so that does a slightly larger easement so you have less of the cattle chute effect. That was part of the problem with some of those that had been constructed that were only a very, just enough, just wide enough for the sidewalk itself. So that, recently, in the last few years, we've made that change. So that does help with that. And we also try to make sure when we do establish where these easements are required or where we want to have them located, we try to put them in the best location so that they do make the most sense, so they do get used. And so you have the activity that you want there instead of the activity that you don't want there.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Just from Jeff, if I could. I, I kind of just get a little confused when we're dealing with the appeals. I'm just wanting to clarify that if we vote yes on item 54, that we are voting in favor of the Planning Commission's plan in its entirety?
Yes. Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. Right. And in the, the action by making the appeal brings it before you where it wouldn't have been otherwise. But once it's before you, then it's a straight, here's the plan from the Planning Commission, you vote yes, you adopt that plan, you vote no, you're saying no to the plan.
Okay.
And then of course, as it comes before you, you have the option to amend it prior to voting on it.
And if we amend it though in a way that's different than the Planning Commission, we need more votes?
No.
We don't need five votes?
No, that would be if it was a comprehensive plan-related item.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to amend and require a pedestrian way easement in block seven. I'll second, or can, no, I can't.
I'll second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl.
And a question to Dave, is that the correct identified pedestrian easement?
The block seven?
Block seven.
Yes. That would be the one, if there was going to be an amendment.
All right, thank you.
A discussion on the motion?
The reasoning is that oftentimes it may seem inconsequential, but I think the walkability, if you ride a trail, it makes for a great passageway to get throughout the subdivision and actually access other roads that you want to ride on. So I certainly think it's a wonderful feature for most developments. And as we could see from the handout that was provided, that it is pretty standard to have these pedestrian easements. It just really enhances the walkability of the neighborhood.
Cindy?
Yes, so I appreciate the attractiveness of walkability, but this particular developer is not using that as a selling point and has specifically asked for the waiver and it was granted. And so I, I won't be supporting the amendment for that reason.
Other comments? I'll support this motion to amend. They do have a place in promoting public health and being consistent with our policy of trying to limit block length to 1,000 feet. And while this might not be significantly over 1,000 feet, you start to get that slippery slope effect where other folks come forward. In my six years on Planning Commission, you'd see that, people looking to get exceptions because it's never going to be convenient to put in the pedestrian easement. But it does have an important public health purpose. And it sounds like the department has taken steps to try and make sure that they are done in, in responsible ways. So I'll support your motion, Jane. Please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Christensen?
No.
Eskridge?
No.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Rebold?
Yes.
Motion lost, two to three.
Okay, now back to the main motion. Do you have further discussion on the preliminary plat? Cindy?
Thank you. So I know we heard some concerns at our last meeting. And what really stood out to me was this is a, an area of density that actually was approved to be even more dense than it's going to be back in 2006. And while I understand the concerns of some of the homeowners, I thought, well, what you're getting is less dense than what you could have had without any action on this body's part at all. And so I'm going to support the plat.
Further discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then is up for reconsideration, item 55, Cop Plan Conformance 16012, approving the amendment to the Antelope Valley redevelopment plan to add the Telegraph District Phase Two Telegraph Flats and Telegraph Lofts East redevelopment project. This was passed at the last, or adopted at the last council meeting.
I would move that we reconsider this item?
Second.
Motion to reconsider moved by Carl, seconded by Roy. Discussion?
Again, there was some information that was erroneously included in, in the prior information that, that we need to correct. And so that's, that's, makes that correction. You can explain it a whole heck of a lot better than I did.
Tim C. from the City Law Department, if I may, I would just briefly go in. I, I promise to be brief. So what's, what's on the Elmo, which should come up here shortly, is the plan that was originally submitted to the Planning Commission. That was subsequently amended. And what happened was when the documents went from the Planning Commission to the City Council packets, the older version was, was put into packets as opposed to the one that was approved by City Council. And the difference between them is the areas here that I'll, I'll show you in red, they're both city-owned property. They were omitted, or excuse me, they were added as part of the subsequent amendment that was actually approved by the Planning Commission. So this is, this was the original, the green was the project area. This is the one that Planning Commission actually voted on. And you'll see that the triangle and the area here with the municipal building were actually included in the, in the plan that was approved by Planning Commission. So we would just ask you to vote to reconsider that matter. And then there's a motion to amend, I believe, to adopt the new plan, if you would have voted on that, and then on the main motion.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? First, Tim. Go ahead.
So on the motion to amend, is there any, is there any problem with us voting on that under reconsideration if the packet originally contained the wrong diagram?
Because this is on the agenda and it wasn't just brought up tonight at the hearing, I believe you're okay to vote on it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further discussion on this item? All right, so can you please call the, I'm sorry?
Need to move to amend, right?
No, this, we need to vote to reconsider it first.
Where should we consider it first?
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And then I would move that we amend this item to include the correct documentation that Mr. C. presented.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Roy. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, and now on the main motion, Teresa?
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items 56 through 63. Ordinances on first reading are items 64 through 73. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time since it is an open microphone session.
Hi, Mike Morosen. Recently, I was going down to get a bus pass for a friend of mine that's handicapped. And when I went down there, there were some people taking license plates. And I asked them, I said, well, we were wanting to know who was parking down by the Startran building. So I took a look at that and then this press release here I was able to come up with. And this was the press release, you may have seen the press release, on putting parking meters down there. And basically, you know, it said the business will be, I talked with a few businesses and some businesses never got contacts. And then leaflets were going to be put out and there were, really, nobody saw really any leaflets. This is like the zoning, when they send everybody a letter to the people in the zoning area, nobody got the letters. So same type of thing, you know, here, I think we could have did a better job. So I went down and I took some pictures. This is Ethan K. looking north. Okay, and you can see the parking meters along there. Nobody's parking. And this is another one on a, a different day. And as you can see, nobody's kind of parking there. And this one here is Nathan J. looking, you know, west. So you can see the parking meters, nobody's parking there. And this one's Ethan J. looking north. And so as you can see, nobody's parking there. So when we take a look at it, and I talked with a number of people, at Startran, there's only basically 38 spaces available for them to park on, on Startran property. And you've got, they're going to hire, buy more people. So you're going to have 106 people for 38 parking spaces. So this is kind of the, the challenge, you know, you're at the grocery store, you want the closest space type of thing. So, you know, I think we can do a better job here. We spent all this money on parking meters. Now, at first, it started out, they were going to have five-hour meters, but they're not working five-hour shifts. So people would have to come out and plug the meters. Well, plugging the meters is kind of against the law. You're going to allow plugging meters here and you're not going to allow plugging meters there. That's kind of funny. So they changed them to 10-hour meters. But if somebody has overtime, somebody's going to have to plug the meter. So none of the Startran employees are parking there because when you take a look at the cost, you know, at a dollar and say a 10-hour meter, that's $300, you know, a month to park there. They brought it down to 75% to see if they would get some people to bite a little bit, but that's still $225. And you're parking, you know, structures and they basically said, well, the college students are going to park down there. Well, these were recent photographs, you didn't see any college students parking down there. So that was kind of bogus. So I think if you're going to spend my taxpayer money putting in these parking meters and all the labor and all the time and the legwork that's done, then it needs to be done properly. I think you can do a better job for the employees. That's kind of a slap in the face to the employee, comes and works. Because remember, the guys driving the buses are driving Petri dishes. You know, everybody's sick and that, everything that's happening. And they're doing their best to accommodate people. And yet they can't park or get a discounted parking? You know, I mean, let's, let's, let's get realistic here and take a look at this. You wonder why there's a morale problem in some of these departments? Well, here's, point right to it. You think of this yourself, you, you have parking, you know, but these people that work, you know, eight to 10-hour and longer shifts if they have to do overtime, really don't have any parking. So I mean, it's a no-brainer. We spent all this money down there. Everything was okay before the meters put in. Everybody was being accommodated. But all of a sudden, you know, we want this revenue. Are we bringing in any revenue? We're not bringing any revenue. So the expenditure for the revenue coming in is, is, is negative. And it's not going to catch up, you know, with this. So I just wanted to bring that frustration, you know, because I ride the bus, you know, to the senior center down there to eat and that. And, and I've ridden the bus with a number of places and talked with a number of people. And this is one of the biggest frustrations, you know, here, we're doing our best to work here as a city employee, but we kind of get kicked in the ass on something like this. So, you know, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I move adjournment.
Moved by Roy, seconded by Cindy. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?[1777.53]